All right, wow, twenty eight people in here. If you can hear me toss something right into a chat there, that would be awesome. Saying, yeah, we can hear you. You're stuck with me. Ah, you can't hear. Thank you, Lena. Thank you. It looks like this is Caddy and Catherine and all that kind of cool stuff. I really appreciate that. We are gonna hang out for just a couple minutes. We're gonna wait for Coach Hall to get in here. Ah, there's the coaches. Let's see if we can hear you.
Hi.
You know what? I need to actually turn my volume up. Hold on here. All right, Coach. Here we go. Yeah, and guess what? There's no echo this time, so that rocks.
I'm so glad because that was super like confusing.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there's no doubt about that. But no, it looks like we're good to go this time around. And I am just so grateful for the people that are in here. We got fifty three kids looking to come in. We've got three more minutes. So, uh, folks, we're gonna sit awkwardly for three minutes. Um, I'm gonna get my tumbleweed. I have one in the front of my classroom and we'll let it go across the screen a couple times and then at eight o'clock, we'll start talking. I'll be right back. All right, here's my tumbleweed. And when my kids don't talk in my classroom, what I do is I shake this and throw it across the floor. I've kind of wondered if I should get one of those little leaf blowers, though, in order to like have it just blow across the floor like that would be more authentic. But instead, uh, that's actually from Nebraska, by the way, or Oklahoma. I had students, I used to do it with my hands. I used to be like, nobody's talking. Here's my tumbleweed. And then one Christmas, I had students that were like, we bought you something. Why would you buy me anything? And sure enough, they were like, hey, he bought you a tumbleweed. It was twenty bucks on eBay. I had no idea that there was a market for tumbleweeds. Uh, so for all y'all that are listening, if you're near any tumbleweeds, apparently you can sell them on eBay for about twenty dollars. And actually, that might have been, I don't know, twenty thirteen. So we're ten years past. We could, we could have, I mean, that's inflation. You could probably get a good thirty, you know? Uh, so, hey, I hope y'all sell tumbleweed. I just put y'all on business. I only, I only require five percent, okay? Five percent of profits go to Freitas for the idea, but y'all go sell your tumbleweeds, okay? Awesome. Connor, I am thrilled. You can go to, you know, you're gonna start the college degree for that. Tumbleweed salesman. I'm going for my tumbleweed degree. That's gonna be great.
That's a good college essay right there.
That's right. How I, how I made money, how I'm paying for my school tuition by selling tumbleweeds. Oh, my gosh. Nobody else is writing that paper. I can guarantee that. And the best advice I could ever give kids for a college essay is make sure that you're writing in, uh, an essay that nobody else has. Yeah, AC here, right? A tumbleweed collection. Oh, this is just from the finest cactus. This is just from the, oh, man, you know what? Beth, I think that, um, I think you and I should consider collaborating on a shirt, like a Coach Hall Writes Garden of English shirt that has a tumbleweed on it. Maybe that's what we should do. Or maybe that might make us appear way too boring. I don't know.
Someone wants to know if it's gonna be recorded and accessible later on.
Yeah, oh, my word. Absolutely. So Sean, the way this works is it's gonna be accessible in Light Hall. Uh, but, uh, Beth and I will also make sure to post it on our YouTube channels as well, so we can do access here, access there. Somebody asked what I was drinking. To be clear, this is just a Canada Dry. That's it. It's a seltzer. Um, energy drinks are terrible for you. Soda, yeah, not sponsored. Um, soda is terrible for you. I don't like plain water, so I typically just throw down a seltzer. I actually don't like seltzer either, but it's better than plain water. So I'm just like, it is what it is. Wow, Beth, we've got a hundred and ninety one folks here. How kind. I can't even believe it. Like, that's just so kind. So welcome, everybody. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Um, and I'm so thrilled here. Uh, what I'm gonna do is this, Beth, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself and where you're coming from, and I'm gonna start posting some information in the chat. And the information that's gonna go in here are just Beth's YouTube channel and my YouTube channel. If you have not checked out either of us on YouTube, if you subscribe to us, like, you don't even need to hit the bell. It's nice if you hit the bell, because then you get new information as it comes. But just subscribing to us allows us to help other kids when they search on YouTube. So when you press subscribe, it shows up in your community feed and whatnot. But it also allows us to kind of jump up in the search rankings, um, so that, you know, we can actually get up higher to help kids um, as they study for their AP Lang exams. And I also do AP Lit, too. So there's a lot of AP Lit study help there. So I'm gonna just toss that in here. Um, for that. Also, shout out to Ms. Foley right there. I just saw Ms. Foley. So Ms. Foley, if you're here, awesome. If your kids are here, hey, guess what? I appreciate you all. But Beth, why don't you start talking? I'll stop talking and we'll stop, uh, we'll start dropping some, um, YouTube links in the chat here.
All right, awesome. Well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for joining us. My name is Beth Hall. I go by Coach Hall Writes on YouTube and also Instagram and TikTok. And I am an AP Lang teacher from Arkansas, and I'm also an AP reader. So I'm excited because this year we actually get to go in person to Tampa. Last year it was like at home on our computers. It was a little bit less fun. And so, yeah, um, so we are gonna be facilitating a conversation tonight, answering your questions about rhetorical analysis to start. So if you guys have questions, feel free to drop them in the chat and we can get started pretty soon.
And I am Tim Freitas, and I work at Whitensville Christian School in a small little town called Whitensville in Massachusetts. Um, and I'm with the Garden of English. So for those of you that are here for the coach, um, you know, now you're introduced to me, too. We did put the, uh, YouTube channels that we have in the chat. We'll also put some, um, we'll also put some other videos in the chat, uh, because we're not covering multiple choice like we did last time this week, but we do have some multiple choice videos. We could toss in there for some other information for y'all that, that want that. Um, I am an AP reader. I'm also a table leader. I'm also a sample selection kind of guy. So that means that I go in and I'm one of the first people that goes in and we, and we, we choose what score is like a one, four, one and a one, four, three, based on the criteria that's there. Um, so I'm heavily involved with that kind of stuff. I'm a college board consultant, so I work with teachers all across the country as well. Um, and I teach AP Lang and AP Lit and Theology and Honors English Ten and Junior Research and a bunch of other stuff like that. So uh, I am so thrilled that you're here. I'm, I'm just so grateful. I can't believe this, Beth. Like, the numbers just keep going up and, and the idea that kids want to study for their AP exam. I'm happy, I'm happy that we can help. I really, really am. Um, so someone said, turn up the volume. Uh, hold on here. Uh, let's see.
Ours is good. I think some people at home are having trouble hearing us. We're getting mixed. Like, most people say they can hear, but there's a couple who said that they can't.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, good. Uh, so yeah, check your volume. All right, awesome. Audio seems to be mostly good here. Um, and we're gonna get into, starting with rhetorical analysis. So if you've got questions about rhetorical analysis, just know that there's a lot going on in the chat. Shout out to every teacher ever that's, that's paying attention right now. Um, if Beth or I catch one, we'll give the shout out to the teacher, too. So I'm super thrilled that you want that. Um, I just saw Atlanta Christian Academy, like, hey, shout out to y'all, Mrs. Granato. Awesome. Um, let's see, there are a couple other ones up there. If I don't know how to say your last name, I'm gonna probably butcher it, uh, butcher it. And I'm sorry, but it looks like it says Ms. McCo. Uh, but if I pronounce that wrong, you know, just judge me. Okay, that's all. Just judge me. I don't mind. Um, but shout out to y'all. Uh, pretty awesome there. Uh, but Beth, why don't we start by talking about, let's start, let me think about rhetorical analysis. So let's start thinking about our intro paragraphs first. And I want to know either A, what are your biggest struggles that your kids typically have, especially at the beginning of the year, uh, that you kind of work with already, or that they might still have? Um, or B, you know, for intro paragraphs, what are the, what are the things that you want to make entirely clear to them? And then I'll, I'll start addressing that myself after you take care of it. And I'll, I'll mine the, uh, the chat for some questions here, too. Okay?
All right, sounds good. So one of the things that I work with my students on for introductions for rhetorical analysis is for timed writes, we want to keep it pretty short because honestly, you only have about forty minutes to write the essay anyway. And so I tell my students, in a worst case scenario, just write a defensible thesis. And for rhetorical analysis, to be defensible, we need rhetorical choices and we need to see either the message, argument, or purpose there. Those are the two things that I look for. Now, many of my students write maybe one or two context sentences before the thesis. But I tell them that honestly, the only point they get in their intro really is that thesis point. So we want to keep it pretty quick. Especially because they have a lot to say in their body paragraphs. Usually my students do two body paragraphs, but they develop them pretty well. And so we don't want to waste a whole lot of time on the intro. So that's something that we're working on is just really concise, but, um, meaningful introductions. And also, one thing that we are always working on is using rhetorically accurate verbs. So instead of saying something like, the author uses repetition, we might try to say repeats or something like that, just kind of choosing verbs that are a bit more accurate, because there's nothing wrong with using the noun form in the thesis per se, but it does sound better when you use rhetorically accurate verbs. It kind of broadens it up a little bit. So those are some things that we're working on with intros.
All right, now, uh, when you talk about a concise intro, Beth, how long is, how long does that typically look for your kids?
Uh, most of them do, I would say, on average, like, three sentences. I have some that do more. But really, they try to do at least one sentence or two before their thesis. Um, just to make sure that they've got the whole rhetorical situation in there. And you can sort of use the information from the prompt, depending on the passage. You know, sometimes they might know historical information about the passage anyway, so they might include a little bit of that in there. But they're trying to make sure that it's really clear who's the speaker, who's the audience, um, what's the occasion, you know, is it a commencement speech, a eulogy, things like that? Um, and then they want to lead into that thesis. So I would say on average, like, three sentences per an intro for my students.
Gotcha. Okay, so, um, please note that as, as, you know, Coach Hall and I give you all advice, like, this is advice that you can take or advice that, um, you know, you, you can leave, quite frankly. Um, let me just look up one video here, just because I want to give some advice as well. Um, so for me, when I do a rhetorical analysis thesis statement for, um, for question two, my students have two options that we work through. Now, number one, when it comes to an intro paragraph, I get kids asking all the time, um, uh, hold on one second here. I'm getting, I'm getting texts as well about people that can't sign in, or they're having a little bit of trouble. So like, I'm in three different directions here. Anyway, um, when it comes to rhetorical analysis in the intro paragraph, right, uh, I have students ask me all the time if the presi is an appropriate model for the beginning of rhetorical analysis. And the answer is that, that can work, uh, just fine. Okay, so some kids are like, can I use this? Yes, because that's, we need something in the intro paragraph that's going to create the entire rhetorical situation. Um, I have a template where I can get the whole rhetorical situation into a really sophisticated, complex, single sentence. Um, and I tell my kids, if you use that, it's gonna really help drive things home. On top of that, I have another template that actually splits it into two sections, which is a little bit more sophisticated, particularly because what it requires kids to do is in the first sentence, it requires the kids to address a challenge that the speaker is focus, uh, facing. So that means that there's an inferential reading element that says, hey, listen, I recognize that this particular speaker had this challenge with this particular audience. And there you have exigent speaker and audience. And the next part, in the next sentence where the choices are kind of listed out, and so is the purpose, one of the things that I require my kids to do is they say, instead of doing this, the speaker chose to list out your choices and then your purpose. And what happens there is the reason why that becomes a little bit more sophisticated is because it's showing that you have inferential reading skills and you recognize that the speaker could have done something different, but didn't do something different. And the speaker made a very purposeful choice for A, B, and C. Now, uh, as a reader, I will tell students, right, that the safest way to get the thesis point, and right now, we're just kind of thinking of the thesis point for this essay, is to list out your choices in your thesis. Now, some teachers want to crucify me when I say that, because they're like, that's terrible writing, that's awful. Why list out the two or three choices that you're gonna write about, when you can just put the purpose there? And I get it. Okay, I really do. But I'm gonna just share my screen here for a moment and pull up. Let me see if I can share what I'm looking for. There it is, right? And I'm gonna pull up what it says in the scoring guide for question two. So question two is here. And it says right here, it responds, the thesis responds to the prompt with a defensible thesis that analyzes the writer's rhetorical choices. So the word rhetorical choices, the, this phrase is right here. So for my students, I'm like, look at, the safest play here is to put your choices in the thesis, because now it says responses that earn this point. They respond to the prompt rather than restate it. And the thesis clearly takes a position rather than just stating that there are pro cons, right? Um, that's weird, because that's the wrong. That's weird, because that's for argument, not rhetorical analysis. Um, so I don't know what is, what happened here. Let me go and find another rubric here for question two. Here we go. All right. Um, yeah, it says that analyzes the writer's choices. And a lot of times in that language, it'll say that it articulates the writer's choices. So I really think, um, that it is, that it's appropriate to put those in there. The other thing, too, is that on test day, like, there's a lot of high stress. There's a lot of, um, times when my students will lose their train of thought. And if they have a really solid thesis that has their choices in it, they can just go back and be like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Here's the other choice that I had to write about and match it up with my thesis, uh, with, um, my purpose here. So my, my best advice for the intro paragraph that my kids struggle with at first is they struggle with getting the entire rhetorical situation into the intro paragraph. So I give them a template to do that. I give them one of two options. And I know that the coach has options on her channel, too, and some of those videos for that.
Hey, we had a request. Sorry to interrupt you. We had a request for an example of an intro. Do you happen to have one, or do you want me to?
Yeah, let me, you know what? Um, I will, I will bring one up. I have them attached to some of, let me stop sharing my screen here. Uh, I will bring up an example of, uh, what those look like in just a minute, when I'm, when I'll let you talk in just a moment here. Um, so I can look for some examples of what those intro paragraphs can look like. Um, but always know that Coach Hall and I have so many videos and just if you do like a, um, if you do like a, you know, succinct search where it's like Coach Hall Writes Thesis Templates, right, or Rhetorical Analysis Thesis Template, you'll most likely get the, um, the video that you're looking for. Um, also, I want to just give a shout out to Ms. Grillo's class. I saw a couple of names shine through here. Ms. Henson's class, Ms. Cody's class, Ms. Redlin's class, Ms. Shannon's class, like, all y'all. Thank you so much. Your teachers are awesome. Make sure that you give them all the respect that they deserve. Um, and I'm sure that there are some other, oh, yeah, Lee High School in San Jose, California. Shout outs to that. But, uh, Beth, why don't you give me a moment to look up, uh, some of these kind of intros here? And then once I start presenting mine, you can bring up some of your templates from the video if you want and show that, too, okay? All right, so give me, give me just a minute. I'll pull some up.
Okay, so do you want me to answer some questions in the chat while you're looking?
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, the other thing, too, and actually, I could share this, too, while I'm looking, is, um, let me pull this up. This right here is just a visual. You might screenshot this if you're at home. This takes some common devices that kids like to write about and just turns them into verbs for you. So instead of saying the author uses diction, you could say the author chooses to include a lot of negative images, or the author decides to, or the author, you know, um, phrases this in such a way. So this right here is something that you might want to screenshot. For those of you that are like, how do I not talk about nouns, but actually talk about verbs instead? Because choices are verbs. Nouns are what devices are. But, uh, Beth, why don't you take care of, uh, looking at that? And I'll try to pull up some of those examples. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, no problem. Um, oh, someone wanted to know if the posters on your site.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so I answered a couple in the chat, but I'll just kind of say the answers out loud. So someone wanted to know, can you write a closed thesis and still get the sophistication point? And yes, you can.
My kids do it every time.
I know. So do mine. And honestly, if you look at some of the college board samples, they do it as well. But let's clarify what a closed thesis is. Because honestly, I would say the vast majority of AP Lang students, for exam purposes, do a closed thesis. So a closed thesis is basically when you say what your main points are gonna be. So you might say something like, the speaker does this and this in order to, and then you would say the purpose. And just as a reminder, um, on Garden of English and Coach Hall Writes, we both have different thesis statement videos with templates that you guys can use to kind of plug stuff in. But when you, we look at a thesis like that, we assume that the first choice the person said is gonna be what's in body paragraph one. And the second choice is what's in body paragraph two. Now, some people are a little bit critical of closed thesis statements. But here's why I think they're helpful for the exam. If you were writing a twenty page paper for college, you wouldn't write a closed thesis, because you wouldn't be able to list every single point you're gonna make in twenty pages. But you're not writing a twenty page paper for college. You're writing a timed essay in forty minutes. So not only does it help you keep a structure for your essay, but honestly, as someone who read rhetorical analysis last year, I found the closed thesis statements to be a little bit helpful sometimes in looking at students' papers. And honestly, once we know you've earned that thesis point, we start looking at your evidence and commentary. We're not like silently judging you for having a closed thesis statement. And open thesis statements are a little bit more broad, and sometimes they get, um, overlooked. I've seen a few times where it kind of came across as like a summary and it wasn't as clear. Um, and I think they're just a little bit harder to do. So if you're struggling with thesis statements, or even if you just already have a formula that you like, that is defensible, then definitely stick with that for sure.
Um, and so I'm gonna give examples, because someone just asked, what, you know, can I really clarify with an example of a closed thesis? I will. And I promise you that when you all see this, you're gonna be like, yeah, that's not, not sophisticated. So the idea that a closed thesis does not have to be sophisticated is, is it's just not true. Okay? Um, and like I said, um, I do think that it's important to list those choices in the thesis statement, because that guarantees you the point, as opposed to somebody just quickly overlooking it, just like Beth just said. I completely agree. Um, and then, oh, my word, hold on. So Samantha just shouted out a Mr. Correa from Dallas, Texas. Now, if that is the Alfonso Correa that I know and love, like Samantha, make sure that you tell Alfonso, or sorry, Mr. Correa, how much I care about him tomorrow when you see him at school. Okay, it is, yes, okay. Uh, so my students love Mr. Carrera. And when they found out that I knew him, they were like, no way. And I was like, absolutely. Like, he's like a rock star in my classroom. Um, so anyway, I'm gonna share up my screen. I'm gonna give you all an example, and I'll make sure that's very, very clear. So because this is a, because this is a timed exam, folks, what we want to think about, and this is a test-taking strategy. It's not necessarily a good writing strategy, okay? But on test day, you need to figure out, where am I getting the most amount of my points? And that's gonna be in evidence and commentary. So you get one point for your thesis. You get one point for sophistication. And I feel like a lot of times, kids are like, how do I get the sophistication point? When they're not already focusing on the evidence and commentary points that are gonna actually earn them something. So I had a student call me a couple weeks ago, um, and he was like, hey, how do I get the sophistication point for A, B, and C? And I said, if you're not already writing at a one, four, zero, I'd, I'd rather not write, talk about the sophistication point. Not because it's not important to think about sophisticated writing, but because the important points come from the evidence and commentary. So let's make sure we nail that first. But let's check this out, okay? So I have two templates. I'll zoom in. And I'll explain to you what, like, what this thesis looks like. I also have a video about how to use these thesis statements, both closed and open. So if you search for Garden of English Rhetorical Analysis Thesis Statements, I say, here's what it looks like closed, here's what it looks like open, so that you can pick and choose what you think that your teacher would like the best and what works best for you. Okay? I'll try to link that up the next time, um, Beth is doing her thing. Okay, I'll try to go find that. But here's the template here for me. And this is my single sentence template, where it's just in the genre title. And then we have this offset non-essential. Give me some contextual information. Okay? And then we have the author's name, and then I put choice one, choice two, choice three, in order to, what should the audience understand, ultimately moving the audience to. So what this actually looks like is as follows. And I'll show you all what the closed thesis, what, what the closed thesis part of this looks like, okay? So it says, throughout the nineteen sixty-two press release in response to the steel crisis, John F. Kennedy, the president at the time, presents public sacrifice, lists dire consequences, and alludes to Cold War tensions, uh, sorry, alludes to Cold War tensions, and reveals voluminous profits in order to vilify the actions of the steel executives, ultimately moving the American public to join the cause and demanding lower prices and greater public responsibility. So you're gonna notice, I actually have four choices in there. That's a lot, folks. That's a, that's a, that's a lot. You don't need that. I could have easily taken one of those out. Okay, but choice number one, this is where body paragraph one, um, yeah, I'll scroll up to the template. That's not a problem. This is where body paragraph one is gonna focus on. How does he, beginning by presenting public sacrifice, vilify the steel executives and move the public to also be upset? Body paragraph two, how do the dire consequences and the fact that he lists them showcase his anger and move the public to demand greater responsibility? And then I'd probably just move to the three of them here. So reveals voluminous profits. Good. How does the revealing of the profits show that he's angry? And why would that anger the public? And that right there is going to be here. Now, someone said, how many choices can, should we use? Now, Beth, I'll let you answer that question, then I'll answer that question.
I think it really depends. I would say at minimum two, because you want to be able to make multiple claims. And so we want to be able to have at least two body paragraphs. And so I would say the minimum is two, but some students do include three. Um, and there's other ways where students kind of like sneak stuff in, like, they might use a tone word as like an adjective, like, in his patriotic speech. And then like, that sometimes comes up in the essay, too. But like, so, yeah, I would say two is what I see the most, but sometimes three.
Yeah. And so the truth is, right, so a couple of great questions are coming in here. How many should you write about? How many, listen, I don't love the idea of kind of showing off, like, here's the minimum you can do to get the highest score. I tell my kids, I want you working hard. I want you giving me your best, right? But the actual, like, math behind it is, if you're a really strong writer, if you write a thesis and two body paragraphs about two choices, you can get the best score of a one, four, one. It just has to be good. And somebody asked a question about commentary. I'll deal with that after. Um, I tell my students to always shoot for at least three choices. Minimum they should be doing is two. Um, and I, I also tell my kids that, um, well, I'm not even gonna get into conclusions right now. But, so the idea that you have to write three is nonsense. The idea that you have to write about four, five, or ten, also nonsense. Um, but to get the highest score, you're gonna have to write about at least two choices. That's guaranteed. So that typically means two body paragraphs at minimum. Um, and this is test day information. Like, I don't want anybody to think, well, Freitas says that's good writing. No. Because if I actually had time to write a process paper, that's a rhetorical analysis, I could write about fifty-five different choices that a speaker makes. And at that point, I have to have a nice, broad paper, right? But because this is test day, I tell my kids, hey, listen, just give me, just give me what we're looking for here. And because of that, that's gonna be what helps us out. Okay, so, um, if you're writing three, that's fine. Now, somebody also asked in the chat, what happens if you have three in the thesis, but you only get to two? And then you're like, crud, I gotta move on with my paper. Good. Go back to your thesis and cross it out. Folks, as readers, we know that this is a rough draft. If something's crossed out, we're like, oh, kid didn't get there. Okay, let's look at what's actually there. And we tried to award points. We never take points away. It's always, how many points can I give you for what's in front of me? So that's really, really, really important there. Um, I am gonna just show the second template, and I think that you all will notice very quickly how much better this template is in terms of like driving to something sophisticated, okay? And I highlighted this yellow stuff that shows a little bit more. Now, just doing your thesis like this will not earn the sophistication point. But it'll put you in a good position, um, to get the person thinking, oh, hey, this kid's a good writer and an inferential thinker, and that might help. So check out thesis two, and our template's right here, okay? It says, as the country was reeling from the terrorist attacks of nine eleven, President George W. Bush faced the grave challenge of uniting the devastated and politically divided American public. So right there, we've got a really good kind of, oh, hey, look at, here's our challenge. So this is our exigence. And we have the context, which is the terrorist attacks. Um, and actually, the, the context is the politically divided American public, and we know who the, the audience is. I mean, it's all in there. And then it says, in what is now famously known as his post-nine-eleven speech, rather than calling for patience or peace, which is what he could have done, I have, he chose to prepare the nation for retaliatory action by reminding of their strength, of their strength in the midst of tragic grief. And there are choices here. Notice, he chose to prepare. He chose to remind. And what was he doing this for? To express their grief and to get them to retaliate. So this right here um, is absolutely a delicious thesis as well. Okay? And, um, so Beth, if you want to talk about anything, I will find the video that actually has this in there, so kids can save that later as well. Um, uh, I think it's Elena, if I said that correctly. I'm not gonna put the template in the chat, but what I will do is I will link the video that has a template in the description down below that you can just download and copy and paste yourself, okay? All right, let me, let me unshare, and then Beth, you can do your thing.
Okay, well, um, we've got a couple of really good questions, um, about some commentary and stuff, so.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we could start some of those. Oh, someone said, how many choices should we choose? Um, it really depends on like what your, your goal is for the paper, at least two. And like Tim said, if you write too many in your thesis, you can't get to it. You could cross it out. Um, sometimes choices kind of work in tandem with each other, too.
Sorry, that was my, that was my bad.
Um, so, yeah, but let's maybe, while he's getting Um, so yeah, but let's maybe, while he's getting the video link for that, let's maybe talk about some of these questions about commentary. Um, so there were a couple of questions about how do I improve my score from a one, two, zero to a one, three, zero? So one of the biggest things that I noticed this summer when I was reading for rhetorical analysis was that a lot of times, uh, there were, first of all, there were so many different ways to earn a one, two, zero. Like you had some people that barely got that second point in row B, and then you had other people that were so close to three points, but they didn't quite get there. And that's something to keep in mind as a student too, is sometimes your writing might be getting better, but you're still in the same range on the scoring rubric. And so with a one, two, zero, that probably means that your commentary is either limited um, or simplistic. So it might be that you have some commentary there, but it's just kind of like, um, a little bit like cliche maybe, or it's a little bit obvious. So I try to encourage students to, um, number one, try to write at least two sentences, two sentences, sorry, of commentary for each piece of evidence that they have. That way, even if it feels repetitive, you're at least trying to put the commentary in. But the big thing to get to that one, three, zero is to actually focus on the relationship between the rhetorical choice that you're analyzing and the rhetorical situation. So the rhetorical situation is the like space part of space cat, or if you use the acronym soapstone, it's the soap part. So the rhetorical situation is the speaker or writer, the audience, the, uh, context, like historical context, the exigence, that means like what prompts them to speak or to write. And then also we've got the purpose, because all passages have a purpose. Um, and then either the message or the argument. So you want to be asking yourself, for instance, why did the speaker make this choice for this particular audience? Because speakers tailor their message to their audience. So you want to connect it to that, or you might connect it to the occasion. If you're reading a eulogy, like a funeral speech, the person's going to make certain choices because it's a eulogy. They're probably going to start to reminisce about the person's life. They might have, um, some anecdotes about that person because they're trying to honor that person. Right? So we want to make sure that we're connecting the choice to the rhetorical situation. Think about the audience and the occasion itself, um, and really emphasize purpose. So your prompt is going to ask you about the message, argument, or purpose. It could be any of those three. But if it asks you about purpose, really emphasize the purpose. Tell us like to, and then give us a verb. That usually indicates purpose. If you're asked about message, then tell us, you know, to develop the message of, and then tell us what the message is. Don't just say the message. Cause if I'm reading an essay and a student says, oh, the writer does this to convey their message, but if you haven't told me what the message is yet, then you're not really showing me you understood the passage. The same thing goes with argument. Always be specific. So if there's a message, tell us what the message is. If there is an argument, tell us what that argument is. Because sometimes they give you that info in the prompt and other times they don't. So one of the things you really want to think about is, hey, as I'm analyzing, I need to prove to the person reading my essay that I understood the passage. So those are just some, um, some quick tips there. But the biggest thing is connecting to the rhetorical situation. I think that was the thing that I saw the most this summer is the scores that were a one, two, zero, they just didn't give enough of a connection. So it kind of fell a little bit flat.
Awesome. Um, yeah. So just so you know, Beth, for some reason on my screen, you're frozen. Am I frozen on your screen?
No.
You're not, you're not frozen for anybody else. So apparently it's just, it's, it's a me problem. Um, which is, which is good. I'm glad that it's a me problem and, uh, for no one else. Also, I want to just point out, I know that there's some teachers that are in the audience as well. Um, and I know that you have expertise to answer some of these questions that are coming in the chat, and we're going to try to hit them all. But if you want to throw in your expertise as well, we, we welcome that because it's hard to manage all of these kind of words and phrases that are coming in. And apparently I posted the same video for thesis statements, uh, under the guise of saying that they were commentary videos. So please forgive me for that. Um, and what I'm going to do here is, so you said that the original question was what, how to get to the one, three, zero from the one, two, zero. That's, that's what we're trying to do with here. Okay? So a couple of things here that, that I can notice that can help with every bit of piece of advice that Beth just gave, because it was absolutely fabulous. Um, and one of them is your topic sentence. So in a body paragraph, you are going to have a topic sentence, and that is a contract that you are setting up between you and the reader to make sure that you are going to cover this in your paper. And what I have noticed is, um, from reading tons and tons and tons of essays, that the best papers don't just have what the author's doing, and they don't just have why the author is doing it. They have both back to back. So what I did with my students is I make, I make my students in every topic sentence have a what and a why. And I also make them write chronologically. So a topic sentence, y'all, you can hear me right, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay. So a topic sentence, and I'll show you all an example of this, um, in just a moment, is going to have what the author is doing and why the author is doing it. So for example, right? If I told a joke to y'all and y'all laughed, right? I would hate for you to say in terms of rhetorical analysis, oh, Tim Freitas told a joke, period. And then say, he said, and then you put the joke there, why the chicken crossed the road to get to the other side? Because what happens there is you're not connecting the rhetorical choice, me telling the joke, to any purpose at all. If my students are going to write a topic sentence about me telling a joke, what they're going to do is they're going to say, Tim Freitas told a joke in order to, and then they're going to say why, and they're going to say to make, uh, to make the class laugh. And so now they've set up what they're going to cover in that paragraph. They're going to reveal what my joke was, and they're going to explain how that made the class laugh. Well, this is exactly what you're doing in rhetorical analysis. If, most kids have take, have, um, have seen the Florence Kelly speech, um, in their AP class. If you have it, that's okay. It's very easy to look up. But she argues against child labor. And at one point, um, she repeats a particular phrase to make adults feel guilty. So my students would not just say Florence Kelly uses repetition, period. They would say Florence Kelly repeats a specific phrase about, you know, uh, nighttime habits in order to move the audience to feel guilty. That's their topic sentence. So they'll put the evidence in, hey, here it's that repeated phrase. And then they'll explain, how does that repeated phrase itself make people feel guilty? Um, and so those topic sentences, if you can make those have those two parts, what the author is doing and why the author is doing it, that's going to help move you from that two to the three in no time, because you know what you have to connect it to with your commentary. The best way to do that is to put the words in order to in every topic sentence. The author does this in order to this. You have a what and you have a why. Uh, I have some other commentary tips that I'll give out in just a minute, but Beth, what do you want to say about that?
I do something very similar. So the what and the why, um, and you can even start the sentence with an order to sometimes, like in order to do this, the person does this. Um, but that can be really helpful because it's creating a structure. And then you mentioned analyzing chronologically, and so that's something that there might be some questions about. Um, so when we analyze chronologically, we're looking at the passage from beginning to end. And longer speeches or passages sometimes have a beginning, middle, and end. Sometimes the shorter ones, you can honestly divide in half, at least some of the ones that I brought my students. Um, so we don't necessarily want to just jump around and find all the examples of repetition and then write a paragraph about it. Now, can you do that and still make a qualifying score? Absolutely. But if we want to think about the author's line of reasoning, and line of reasoning is the structure, it's a logical order. So these passages were chosen because they're strong passages. The college board isn't going to choose something that's not a good passage. So if the writer made choices in a certain order, perhaps to build up to a call to action, then we want to analyze those major choices in order to. So whatever they do at the beginning, we might have a paragraph about what they do in the middle, we might have a paragraph about. And what they do at the end, we might have a paragraph about. Um, or sometimes I'll have students combine it. They'll do like beginning, middle together, and then like end separate or something like that. But we want to follow the author's line of reasoning, because that will help you have a line of reasoning as well. And then in your topic sentences, like Tim was saying, you can tell us the, the claim, the what and the why, so the choice and the purpose. And you can use your second body paragraphs, topic sentence to kind of create that transition. So like instead of saying, um, another choice the writer makes is, we could actually say something like, um, the writer then shifts to this, like the new choice in order to. That way, we're taking the reader through the passage chronologically. That'll help your writing as well.
Um, also another thing too, so I just put a playlist in the chat that's just from the Garden of English, which goes all the way from how to annotate a piece, to break down a prompt, to writing each part of the rhetorical analysis essay. I'll talk about commentary in a moment. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is someone asked, you know, how do I come up with all this commentary? If I don't understand the passage and, um, one of the best ways to do that is to turn a rhetorical analysis prompt into a question. So a lot of times it will say something like, analyze the rhetorical choices that Florence Kelly makes to convey her message about child labor. Well, you can easily turn that into a question. What is her message about child labor? And when you get done, if you realize that she thinks child labor is abhorrent and that women's voting rights could vote to end that, well, now we know what we read the piece for, and we just say, okay, what choices show me that child labor is abhorrent? And why would this encourage people to also support women's voting rights, uh, to end it? And so that's a great way to quickly know what you're looking for. And in that playlist, I have a prompt breakdown on how, uh, where I teach you, um, how to break down a prompt like that every single time, so that you can deal with that. Now we'll shift to argument in about five minutes, because we're going to go from argument to synthesis. So we'll end with argument today. And we'll go argument and synthesis for our next time we meet. And then the date before the AP exam will just be a free for all. Um, but, um, one other thing too here is this, um, I'm going to deal with commentary in just a moment, uh, from, from my side, but I also am going to put a link in here to, um, oops, that's not what I want. I want to, oops, sorry. Uh, I'm going to put a link in here because I know that Coach Hall is running a, running a free rhetorical analysis workshop that you could sign up for, and it's completely free. It's also through Light Hall. So you already, most of y'all already have accounts. I'm going to post that right here. Um, also someone asked about putting the, putting the, um, word line of reasoning in your paper. No, you don't need to ever put.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not needed. But what I'm going to do right now is this, I'm going to pull up the, uh, just an example, because I have a couple of moves that can really help you all with your commentary. And, um, you know, because this is only an hour long and it's fleeting, and there are so many questions, and there are a lot of people here that have, are looking for information. We can only like touch upon these things. I always want to remind you that we have videos for this. You just got to search a little bit. But one of the things that I have, that I do is I have a model for commentary. Um, and the model for commentary is this. So my students are going to have a what and a why in their topic sentence. Okay? So here I have highlighting the power of nonviolent tactics. I know that my face is covering that. I'm sorry, y'all. But it says highlighting the power of nonviolent tactics, Caesar Chavez begins by exemplifying an American civil rights hero. So I've got my rhetorical choice. He exemplifies an American civil rights hero. I've got why, because it highlights the power of nonviolence. The next part of my paragraph then puts in the textual evidence where Caesar Chavez works to exemplify a civil rights icon. So I put the language in. And then I have my commentary. Now, the way that my commentary works is this. My students know that in the first sentence of commentary, they must always have the word because. So they're going to say this from the evidence. They're going to put the why from the topic sentence, and then they're going to have the word because. The word because is key for increasing your commentary, folks. After they write that sentence, they're going to start the next word, the next sentence with the word since. And that's going to force you to think about, okay, if this is the logical connection I'm making, it's since this happens. So you're going to make another logical connection. Then my students have to use the language of thus if. And there we have three sentences of commentary, and those stems typically will push you to articulate the critical thinking that you've been doing about that evidence. I then have my students to make two more moves, which are listed out down here. They're bold faced and underlined. But if you're looking to just better your commentary to get to the two to the three, just use the word because, and that's going to help. Change your topic sentences and start putting the word because in there, you're going to get a lot of help there. If you're looking to move from the three to the four in your commentary, you want to really consider taking this particular step. Now, in a couple of weeks, I'm also going to come up with a video that's very much like this, but for argument, that says, hey, here are the three steps to take in your commentary for argument, and every time it's guaranteed to increase your commentary. But that's going to take me about, uh, probably two more weeks to get out. So I'm just going to toss that out there. But we have older videos that do this. I know Coach Hall does too. Um, but it'll be one of my newer videos. It's a little bit more flashy than my old boring stuff where I say, ah, and I'm a lot like I am right now. So just a heads up on that. But this is right in that, in, in the playlist that I posted in the, um, in the chat as well. So Beth, I'm sorry for talking too much, but, uh, that's our example there.
I think we have one more big question to answer before we move on. Uh, we've had a couple of questions about conclusions and are they necessary? And then like, what should we do? So first of all, no, they're not necessary. It's not listed in the rubric. And quite frankly, the advice I give my students is if you have only a few minutes remaining and you have to choose between writing a conclusion and writing body paragraphs, or like finishing your body paragraphs. If you know you have a defensible thesis already, then work on those body paragraphs, because that's going to be the bulk of your score. But if you do have time for a conclusion, there are some quick things that you can do. You don't necessarily have to restate your thesis if you don't want to. Some kids like to. I don't really have a problem with it either way. But what I tell my students to do is to try to zoom out and situate the issue in a broader context. So for instance, if it is a historical passage and you know the history of it, then you might want to include that history. So if you're reading about, let's say Bush's nine 11 speech, you would know that the US did ultimately go to war. You would know that we just had the 20th anniversary of things like that. So you can kind of go forward in history and talk about the impact of it. Um, or you can maybe even go backwards in history a little bit if you want to. Um, and if it's asking you about a message, like let, let's say Madeline Albright's one about the commencement speech where her message was to persevere. Ask yourself, how is this message relevant today? So she was talking about like the role of women and breaking the glass ceiling and persevering through adversity, things like that. So ask yourself, to what extent is that message relevant today? And, um, that way you can still be situating it in a broader context. So we really want to kind of, in the conclusion, go beyond what the passage says, if at all possible. Um, and so those are just some tips for that. And in a second, I'll link a video about conclusions in the chat. But they're not necessary. Um, some people ask, can it really help, um, you get the sophistication point? And it, I suppose it can help a little bit, but remember sophistication has to be consistent throughout the whole essay. So one really good intro or a really good clue, conclusion on itself is not going to earn that point. Um, but it can help your overall essay, depending on what you say.
Awesome. Awesome. And so I actually posted just a video in there about, um, where, uh, like my, my conclusion video, um, I have steps for conclusions. I tell my kids the exact same thing. Listen. Um, a strong conclusion is a great way to end, but it's not, it's not the be all and end all of everything, uh, especially in a timed writing. And I agree, if you can write another body paragraph as opposed to a conclusion, why not? Um, and, um, so somebody asked if there's a place where all these links will be posted by title. And the truth is like on our YouTube pages, like if you go to Coach Hall writes, or if you go to, um, let me show you all how to navigate this kind of stuff. Um, for those of you that might not know, um, so if you were to go to, you know, pull this up, um, Garden of English on YouTube, if you go to the actual main page here, just make sure you press subscribe, of course. But if you go to playlists, you'll be able to see all of these playlists listed out for you here. Okay? So you could just scroll over and sure enough, it's like, okay, here's my AP Lang rhetorical analysis essay. View the full playlist and it's right there. So everything is here. Um, and I'll show you with Coach Hall as well. Uh, Coach, you do playlists, right?
Yes, I do. And also with something else that people can do is if there's something really specific that you want, like you want Coach Hall writes conclusions, then just type that into the search bar. If you want Garden of English introductory paragraph, usually those key words, since they're probably in the titles of our videos will come up as well. And you can find it that way too, if you don't want to search through the whole playlist, because we both have like two years of content. So while it's all, hey, you better subscribe. I see.
I know. I don't, I'm like, I'm like, how have we been doing this for two years and I'm not subscribed? That's so terrible. I'm so sorry.
But yeah, if you're looking for something specific, like, um, like how to write a rhetorical analysis essay, if you type that in, chances are our videos will pop up as well. If, so if you want something specific and you don't want to go through all the playlists. chances are our videos will pop up as well. If, so if you want something specific and you don't want to go through all the playlists, then try that. But if you do want to like just kind of cram, the playlists are honestly a great way to start.
Yeah, absolutely. And on top of that, I just saw that comment from Alexi and we really appreciate your support. And a huge shout out to you. There's no doubt about that for sure. So thank you. Thank you so much for being here and supporting us and, and, and what we do and supporting your, supporting your kids. That's just kind. That's what it comes down to. Why don't we start to shift to argument? The question that I saw was about generating argument examples when it's hard to. And I will take that after you take that. Okay?
I was just having a conversation about this with my students today because they're starting, we're kind of like going back to argument for a little bit. And I gave them a prompt from AP Classroom, something about like the value of integrity. And they were like, well, what do we write about? You know, and so I kind of let them work in groups to brainstorm, but I think sometimes students put a lot of pressure on themselves to come up with these like super like sophisticated examples, for lack of a better term, but the key I think is being able to use specifics. So it doesn't have to be the most like studious or academic sounding example if you know it well. And so I know Tim and I use different acronyms for coming up with evidence. His is S cubed. And mine is chores. There's a ton of them out there. Like there's probably like seven different acronyms that AP teachers use. But it all boils down to coming up with examples from like your, your subjects like history class or current events. Like if you're taking AP Gov or something, that might be helpful. You can pull from science. You can even pull from personal experience. Some of the prompts that the college board has put out recently lend themselves more to personal experience and some are more like philosophical or historical. So I think it can be really, really helpful. Yeah, I'm seeing Rehugo in the chat. That's another really popular one. And I've even heard of like Gopher and a couple others too. I think it's helpful to kind of like, first of all, brainstorm, like I like it when students outline before they write. Maybe take a few minutes to just kind of jot down the ideas that come to you. And sometimes our initial ideas are actually really good. And sometimes our initial ideas lead to better ideas. So whatever acronym you like, just kind of jot down some ideas, but really ask yourself, can I write about this specifically enough? Because that was something I overheard my students saying today is they were talking about like different things that came to mind. But they're like, oh, I don't know if I could write enough about it in order to earn the points I want. So I would say that's something to keep in mind with choosing examples is like I once read a paper, I think it was the exploring the unknown prompt. Or no, it was overrated. It was this whole essay about how the movie Moana was overrated. And I think sometimes teachers might kind of scoff at that and be like, oh, that's not very academic. It was a very compelling argument because I had a two-year-old at the time. And I finished that essay questioning everything I knew about Disney movies because I had watched Moana probably a hundred times. And the student now had me thinking, was it even really a good movie? My kid loved it, but you don't have to choose these like fancy examples. Sometimes if you go with what you know and you can write about it specifically, that leads to a better paper. As opposed to trying to stretch for something that you're not actually very well like familiar with. Rated, yes, it was.
Right. Yeah, for sure, for sure. I'm going to do a couple, I'm going to answer a couple of questions. And then I'll talk about this kind of evidence generation because I want to show people something that they can do to really help prepare themselves. That I just thought of the other day. I woke up in like a cold sweat in the middle of the night and I was like, that would work. And so I wrote it down and then I brought it to some kids that I was working with in Boston and they were like, oh my gosh, that might work. And I'm like, I think it really will. But anyway, someone, someone was asking, you know, what order should they answer the prompts in? And I want to just point out, I'm going to answer two questions at once here. First of all, no, you have to know yourself. Like there's no right way to answer the prompts as long as you are doing it the way that you are most comfortable. For example, I have a student who struggles with the timing, but she is brilliant. I mean brilliant. So what she does is she writes a thesis and a body paragraph for one, a thesis and a body paragraph for another one, and a thesis and a body paragraph for another one. And she is going to get one, three zeros at minimum on each of these essays, just from the thesis and the body paragraph guaranteed. And then with the time that she has left over, she goes back to the first one and she writes the second body paragraph. And she just tries to get as far as she can. And the reason why is because she knows she struggles with time. But she's brilliant, but she knows that she wants to get as much out as possible for each one because if she can get a one, three, zero for each one, that's a great score in the timeframe. That's one of the liabilities of this test is that it's timed. So sometimes there are kids who are super smart that can't work within that timeframe as much. And it, it is what it is. I'm not the college board. You, you can complain to me all you want, but I, I can't do anything, right? The, so the other question too though is, you know, how do you? How do you like answer your questions? For me, I would always answer rhetorical analysis first. I know that most of my kids answer rhetorical analysis first, but that, because that's what they're most comfortable with. So they like to get the one that they're most comfortable with out of the way because they can write it in 20 minutes. And then they spend more time on argument and synthesis. And I'm like, look at, that's fine. You can do it in whatever order that you want. You just have to know yourself. Are you the type of person that likes to do easy to hard or hard to easy? Think about that. Because depending on how you are, we'll change how you actually want to do things in that way. In terms of evidence generation, I know Beth, you talked about my S cubed, right?
Yeah, but I didn't define it. So you might want to.
I'm going to do that super quick, but I want to just share something for kids that are looking to kind of like find strategies before test day to really help generate evidence. When I have my kids do S cubed, what that means is all that means is subjects, society and self. So they remember one letter and they know to pull their examples from the subjects that they from the subjects that they learned about in school, from society, which is anything from pop culture to religion to, to art. And then themselves. And it's personal examples, which are just from their own lives. Secondary examples, which are examples from the lives of their friends and then hypotheticals. Unfortunately, I do think hypotheticals are kind of the crappiest examples and those are the ones that we probably see the most. So precise examples are way better than hypotheticals. But for those of you that are looking for something quick to do, when you're like, I really want to prepare for my exam. I want to make sure that I've got a lot of examples ready. Check this out. If you do this once a week for the, for your time from now before exam day, look at what it says here. Briefly, yet precisely, describe two of the most impactful moments in your life. So think about that. And describe it in three to five sentences as precisely as possible. And do that once a week until test day. Then briefly, yet precisely describe two of the most impactful moments in the lives of people that you know, because we tell stories to each other all the time. Then briefly, yet precisely describe two of the most impactful moments you've ever seen in media. And I don't care if it's frozen and I don't care if it's Moana, right? Whatever media we're talking about, so be it. If it's cat dog, it's cat dog. Okay? Now, do we want to try to move it towards academic media? Probably. But listen, you figure out what you know. And then we have cultural knowledge. Briefly, yet precisely describe two impactful moments you've experienced in contemporary culture. Or know about from history. For all y'all that are watching Heimler, he gives you plenty of history to think about. Okay? If you were to do this, although there's no prompt associated with this, what you are doing is you are creating a bank of things for you to think about. And it's small stuff here, folks. I'm asking for two. Maybe you're like, I can only do one per week. Fine. Then do one per week. But on the day before exam day, or even the morning of, you can go back to this whole list. And there is no way on this planet that at least two of those examples will not fit the argument prompt that's in front of you. It's 100% impossible. So you have created an entire cache of memories and things that you know are impactful that can work for any single prompt that you could possibly see. Now imagine if we were doing this since the beginning of the school year, all of those memories, all of that history that you could bring in here. And it's just a quick little check and chuck. If you're a teacher out there, right? You just check in that your kids are filling them in. But the key point is this word precisely. Don't just say, one day my sister said, thank you, and I'm done. No. One day I held the door open for my sister. And normally she's incredibly antagonistic towards me, and yet that day she said, thank you. And it reminded me that we're a family and I appreciate her. Boom. There you go. I want you to write it like that. Now that took three sentences. But that's way different than one day my sister said, thank you. So think about it in those terms. Okay? Beth, anything you want to add and or subtract and or anything?
Sure. So we had a couple of really good questions. One person wanted to know, like how can I get more history knowledge? And you mentioned Heimler's history. Love his channel. Something I'm doing with my students is having them look into TED Talks or even just podcasts in general. There's a lot of historical podcasts out there. So we do like an assignment each week where I give them certain topics to choose from and they look into that. And it's usually related to what we're reading in class, but sometimes it's more of like a choose your own adventure kind of thing. So that can be really helpful. There's all different kinds. There's like TED Talks that are made into podcasts. There's medical podcasts. So choose something that you want to know more about. If you love sports, start looking into some famous athletes. Maybe some that have like had adversity or something, like learn about Simone Biles or you know, I think it was like Valieva, the girl, the Russian girl who was like found to be doping and didn't win the gold medal and stuff like that. Shakari Richardson, like if you like sports, start learning more about sports. If you like history, dive in there. Start with something you want to know about and then kind of build your repertoire a little bit. So definitely do that independently. You can literally listen to a podcast as you're getting ready for school. Or if you're driving to school and you can do it safely, listen on the way to or from school. It doesn't have to be something like super taxing. Another question was, can we make up statistics or facts? And I know you and I have talked about this a couple of times and we tend to both say we would prefer that you not because like, to me, it's just a red flag in general. Like I know you could not have looked that up during the exam. So if you say like 68% of people do this, I'm going to assume you made it up because most students don't memorize facts. And if you do happen to memorize a fact from something you did in school, try to quote the source. But otherwise, it's, it's not that it's, I mean, it is dishonest, but it just loses a little bit of credibility with your reader. Because there's other ways to go about it. So do we fact check? No. If you tell us, you know, a story about how your dog died and you never even had a dog, will we know? No. But if you write about real life things that you actually know about, it's going to be more compelling evidence anyway.
Yeah. And you know, for my students, I do tell them, if you were to make up statistics, of course, we're not going to know like you just said, but I say that there's something about your integrity there. Now, I, I once had a student write an argument for me and the argument was awesome. And she came up to me after and I was like, wow, that was really great, a great argument, Dominique. And she was like, well, just so you know, I made up the whole thing. It was a very personal story though, that fit perfectly. And I was like, well, just so you know, that's, that, that's your integrity. And if, and if a score on an essay is worth more to you than, than being honest with me, I, I can't change that. And so, you know, that, that's how I push it. And I, and I encourage my kids not to make up statistics. I'm like, look at, work with what you know. And someone just put the donut in the chat, by the way, that is a great way to get some pop, some, some knowledge in you. The flip side as well, flipside.io, I think is, is the, is the link. That right there sends one quick news article to you every day. So you can know what kind of what's going on and it gives you both perspectives of it.
Yeah. Another one I'll put in the chat is allsides.com. That one has different political perspectives. So that way, like we're not pushing any agenda. That one has all of them.
Yeah, the flip, the flip side does that too. They always say, here's what it says from the left. Here's what it says from the right. And here's what the actual issue is. So that's awesome too. To get that out there. Hey Beth, just real quick, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to just talk about the ultimate review packet for a second. I'm happy to stay on for a couple more minutes if you are, but I want to just show this to, to folks because we're at the top of the hour. This right here, for those of you that are looking for a comprehensive, like review of everything AP Lang humanly possible, I have this thing called the ultimate review packet. I put the link in the chat. I don't know if it's still, yeah, I'll put it in there again. And this right here just goes through all nine units. And what it does is it gives you notes to go with each video. So you have an interactive notes guide that you can actually fill in as you go through the video for content. I actually give you the answers as well. So the answers are here for you. And some, some units have two videos, some have one. And then there's always practical multiple, practice multiple choice with every single unit. And you could actually access the first unit for free, by the way. If you're like, hey, I just want to do unit one. Good. Well, then you sign up. You can get unit one completely for free. And at the, so you have all of this here for every unit. And then at the end, there's also a practice exam. So you could take a full practice exam that we wrote that has our prompts. It has 45 multiple choice questions, just like you would see on the test. And you'll actually notice that we link everyone up to an understanding and a skill. I have rationales for those answers. I have rubrics that you can self-assess with. And then I actually have sample scoring commentary where my students wrote the essays for y'all. And so they wrote these essays and then I rewrote them as a worse paper every time. And I provide commentary on how it gets worse and how they, you know, here's why it's not as good as the one before. Here's why it's not as good as the one before. And you can actually also have a conversion chart here. So you can actually calculate your own score based on yourself scoring there. So just know that is there for you all. And that right there is our ultimate review packet. Also, I would like to point out, and Beth, did you put more links to your free sessions as well?
Yes, I just popped them in the chat.
Okay. So good. So you just toss those in the chat. Alexi, right? I, I, I really love giving away as much stuff as I can for free. The problem is, is that we put over a thousand hours into building the ultimate review packet. So it's $25 a license. Schools could purchase bulk licenses for $15 apiece. But for a student who's going to study for it, for all nine units and all of that, it's actually 408 pages worth of study notes, filled in notes, multiple choice questions, rationales. It's 25 bucks. Okay. And somebody asked if the recording of this will be available. The answer is absolutely yes. It'll be on our YouTube channel. Our YouTube channel is probably tomorrow. And things like that. Okay? But anyway, so now let's go back to the free stuff. I just wanted to make sure I addressed that before the top of the hour. So people knew that there was that comprehensive review guide there and kids can work through those units as they see fit. If you already know unit one and two really well, then go focus on seven, eight and nine. You can do what you want with it. But back to argument here, Beth, what's going on?
So I've seen a couple of questions in the chat. Let me scroll up to one. So we, someone wanted to know about like, what if I don't have any solid facts for the evidence, something like this guy, not knowing his name, did this, only mentioning like characteristics of the person. So basically I think the person's asking like, how specific do I need to be in order to try to get a qualifying score?
So that's a great question. Do you want to answer that? You want me to answer that?
You can answer it and I'll just address a couple more things in the chat.
Okay. So in terms of specifics, when you are specific with your examples in argument, you want to describe them and you want to use the best verbs that you can. Verbs are, are the best part. Don't just be like, so and so once said, no, no, no. If so and so is arguing, then you put argues. Like we want to be precise with those verbs. Because when you provide commentary, you're going to comment back on your example. So if your example is wishy washy, your commentary has to be wishy washy because you're not pinpointing what in my example actually justifies my claim. So for example, if you were to be like, Tim Freitas is the biggest jerk on the planet. And someone's like, well, why would you ever say that? And you'd be like, because in the middle of a free session, he talked about his ultimate review packet, which people have to pay for. Right? And all the, I hate capitalism so much and he's such a jerk. All those things, right? So sure enough, okay, if someone just says Tim Freitas is a jerk because he sells something, well, you can't provide the commentary on what I did that makes me a jerk. Because it just says he sells something. Well, what does selling have to be with being, do with being a jerk? But if somebody misinterprets why I actually have the ultimate review packet is like, oh, he's only doing this to make money. No. I, I really put in a lot of time to put something together for y'all. But if somebody wants to misinterpret that, that's okay. But we can go back and say, okay, here's what selling this for this amount actually turns into, which makes him a jerk. As opposed to highlighting the idea that we try to do, give as much support away for free on YouTube as we possibly can and things like this. If there's a connotation of sale with actually having jerkish character, that's what you need to pinpoint in your commentary. But you can't do that by just saying Tim sells. If you say, you know, if this was a, you know, some sort of pyramid scheme, or this was some sort of like, hey, rope us in with this so that you can get this. All of those motivations are what you need to comment on. That needs to be described in your evidence and then discussed in your commentary. Because his motivation was not to actually help students, but to just, you know, line his own pockets, blah, 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 right? Which is not, never the case, folks. If that were the case, I wouldn't be a teacher. All right. But that's how this works, really getting specific there.
And then we had one question about, we had one question about concessions and like counterclaims, which we, I know someone answered in the chat, but just kind of one thing about that is, so it can be a way to improve your, your argument. But don't just include one for the sake of including one. Make sure that it's meaningful. And make sure that you're putting it in a logical place in your essay. So it depends on what you're writing about. But it might make more sense to get that counterclaim and rebuttal out of the way right away. It might make sense to save it to the end. That's a choice that you make as a writer. And so just to clarify, a concession is a little bit, for lack of a better term, it's a little bit nicer, like it's a little bit softer because you're acknowledging the merit of the other side and then you're asserting your position. Whereas a counterclaim, you're just totally trashing the other side sort of, or at least it seems that way sometimes. And then you refute it. So I like to teach concessions just because like, I think it's a valuable life skill. Like I cannot tell you. Like, I cannot tell you how many times, like, in teachers' meetings, I've had to use the art of concession. Uh, and then get what I want. That makes me sound really bad. But um, it is, it is an argumentation skill. Um, so concessions are helpful. I'll include a link in the chat, because I did a video on this like, oh, probably a year or two ago. Um, but don't include it for the sake of including it, because you think you have to make sure it's actually advancing your argument. Cause it's not necessary.
Right. And you know, I always tell my students, I, I, I tell them, I, I warn them, I say, look, it, if I start conceding a lot, if you and I are having an argument, you better be prepared that I'm about to torch you in an argument. Because that's the best way to actually win an argument is to concede points to the other side. Because that means that the other side will feel like they're being heard, so they'll empathize with you more when you actually come back with a counterpoint. Uh, I did see that chat. I did see that comment in the chat show up a couple of times. Do you have to have a counterargument? Do you have to have a counterclaim? The answer is no. No, you can have a great argument that has a thesis that just says, Tim Freitas is the biggest jerk on the planet. Yeah, if you support that the whole way through, you have your argument. This makes him the biggest jerk on the planet. Body paragraph one. This also makes him the biggest jerk on the planet. Body paragraph two. This also makes him the biggest jerk on the planet. Body paragraph three. And sure enough, we've got the line of reasoning the whole time. And there you go. Um, it's all about me being a jerk. It can be a remarkably sophisticated paper with such a simple thesis, just like that. And I think that a lot of times kids misconstrue a thesis um, as having to be something that is a counterargument-based thesis. And you don't need to have that. It's not entirely necessary. I'll actually be doing an um, an argument thesis video, or sorry, a synthesis thesis video probably next week. And that will help address this too. And I'll show how you can do it with a concession and a counter, or a counterargument and without as well. Um, so Beth, Sarah asked this question. What help would sophistication having a counterargument?
It can, but it's, I've seen it also detract from the quality of essays. So I think we need to be clear, like, it is one way to make your essay more sophisticated, but it depends on the execution. It really does.
Yeah. Um, so um, Leo, I'll answer that question in just a second. I'm gonna just talk quickly about the sophistication here too. You know, a counterargument, I've seen flop a paper before, because the person felt like it was forced to happen and you didn't need it. And sometimes there are, there are prompts that don't really allow for a counterargument. Like the certainty and doubt prompt from 2012. Develop your position on the relationship between certainty and doubt. Well, what's the counterargument to that? Cause the moment I say there's no relationship, I've created a relationship of opposition for them. So there's no counterargument there. So um, sometimes kids force it when really the easiest way to do it would just be like, oh, certainty and doubt cause each other to rise and fall. Boom, that's a way better thesis. And you could just talk about how when you're more certain about things, your doubt falls. And when you're more doubtful, you're less certain. Boom, you're good. There's your paper. It's thesis and two body paragraphs. We're good to go. Um, for something, for something like that. Uh, any other questions in there, Beth? Before we sign off, I'm willing to stay about five minutes more.
Um, I hope I'm not missing any. I don't see any. Um, but I, I, I'm really, I'm sorry if I'm missing anybody. There's just like a lot of comments um, in general. But I don't think I see any more about argument. But here's the good news, though. If you do have more questions about argument, we're gonna be talking about argument and synthesis next time, which is in two weeks from now. So it's April 18th. And so we'll cover more questions about argument and synthesis then as well. So if we did by accident, like skip your question, we apologize. But make sure you come back in a couple of weeks and we can talk more about argument. We'll have more stuff to share with you guys, more tips, more visuals, things like that.
Ooh, you know what, Beth? I'm gonna answer a couple more if you're okay with that, because it's a couple just came in. Um, and um, one of them is if you use a religious argument, um, that the tester does not believe, will that hurt your score? Okay, so Nicholas, let me make this very clear. All right? Uh, first of all, that is an absolutely excellent question. And what I tell my students is this, so I work at a Christian school, okay? And I'm like, look, if you have a strong biblical knowledge, then so be it. Super cool, right? And whatever your faith system is, if you've got a strong knowledge of that faith system, the more precise you can be, the better off you will be with your example. So if your example fits, as long as you can be precise, then we're, then we're good. An imprecise example would be someone saying like, God loves everybody. Okay, if someone's like, so because God loves everybody, blah, blah, blah. No, no, no. If you can pull something biblical or from the Quran or from um, the Vegas, maybe. Um, whatever your faith system's kind of holy text is, you have to be able to be precise with it. The other thing that I tell my students a lot too, is that if you're really going to hammer home an argument with a religious example that you don't know that your reader will believe, you need to at least give some sort of indicator in the language that says, okay, for my purposes, let's at least assume that this is true, so you can follow my reasoning. Just having a little sentence like that will allow me to say, okay, even if I disagree that this may not be a fact because of a different faith system or something of that nature, what will happen is I am then willing to say, okay, let me at least chase this student's reasoning. And if I chase the student's reasoning, um, if I chase the student's reasoning, sorry, trace it, then I can, I'm willing to concede. Okay, we disagree? Not a problem, because this is that student's reasoning and it's reasonable if I can follow that. Also, shout out to Mrs. Robbins class. I saw that in the chat there. So uh, thanks, thank you all for joining us here.
I think the same goes for not just religion, but also politics too, because um, or just even like taboo topics. Uh, I think a reader is going to be much more regardless of their beliefs. Cause we're not supposed to put, project our beliefs onto your paper. You're supposed to get a fair read, an unbiased read. Um, but if you are worried that it's potentially controversial, do exactly as Tim said. Say something to the effect of, for the sake of argument, let us assume that. And that way, you're acknowledging that it's somewhat controversial, but it's better than just dropping it in there. So I would say that applies to religion, politics, and other time, other like controversial issues. Like, if you want to go for it, go for it, but just maybe acknowledge that it's controversial and that will win over some credibility with your reader, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so for all of you that are still in here, we're gonna, we're gonna begin to sign out here. Um, any final questions? We've got three more minutes, but we'll, we'll end at 9:15. Uh, but at 9:15, I do turn into a pumpkin, so I gotta go. And also the Bruins are on, so you know, we gotta watch the hockey. Um, and uh, the other thing too, is that because you are signed into Light Hall, you should now be getting um, messages about our other sessions. So we do have other sessions. I think our next one is April, oh, I don't even remember to be honest with you. Let me go check. Uh, April 18th, and then we have one on May 9th, the night before the exam. April 18th, we're gonna cover synthesis and argument. So we'll do argument a little more and synthesis. Then May 9th will just be one of these um, free-for-alls. Also, Mrs. Gordon's class, shout out to y'all. I don't know if y'all know this, but my middle name is actually Gordon, so now you know. Um, and then uh, oh my word, someone just said that the Penguins are better than the Bruins. I'm about to puke. Um, like toss my cookies all over my, like, my, my uh, keyboard here.
At least you have hockey. I live in Arkansas. There's one.
You know what y'all have down there? Y'all have tumbleweeds down there. That's what you have.
We, we have cicadas and tornadoes.
Yeah, uh, absolutely.
Oh, we got a shout out for, oh, I'm gonna butcher this name, Miss Coity's class. I probably said that wrong. Arkansas has Little Rock. Yes, it does.
There we go. That's right. AC, it all comes back to the tumbleweed. We really appreciate your time here. All right.
Oh, Miss Cody's class. Sorry, Miss Cody's class.
There we go. Um, and then Digital Academy in Florida. Awesome. Nice. Thanks for coming out. All that kind of cool stuff. Um, so with that being said, we'll see y'all in a couple of weeks. Um, and you can re-watch, yep, the questions come a bunch. Can you, can we re-watch this later? Yes, it'll be in Light Hall. And then Coach Hall and I will also put it on our YouTube channels as well, so you can re-watch this. Um, whenever that's the case. And you know what? Uh, uh, Alexi, I'm glad that you're upset about the hockey team and not upset about the fact that I, that I did put the ultimate review packet in here. Um, you know, so I, I do appreciate that. So I'm only a jerk because I'm a Bruins fan, uh, not because of anything else. So I appreciate that. So, all right, you all, have a great night, Beth. Thank you so much for, for joining up again. Um, I really appreciate you a lot.
Yes, thank you.
All right, have a great night, everybody.